I'd like to call the workshop of Greenville City Council on November 7, 2022 to order. I'm Mayor PJ Connolly and I'll be presiding over the workshop today. First, I'd like to call on the city clerk to call the roll. Madam Clerk?
Mayor Connolly?
Here.
Mayor Chris Humber?
Here.
Councilmember Daniels?
Present.
Councilmember Blackburn?
Present.
Councilmember Smiley?
Here.
Councilmember Robinson?
Here.
Councilmember Bell? I will note his presence when he comes back with Mayor Connolly before.
All right, sounds good. We'll move on to the approval of the agenda. How many have we put the agenda?
Say.
All right, motion made by Councilmember Smiley, second by Councilmember Robinson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Measure passes, five zero.
All right, we'll move right on to new business. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. The first presentation is an update on the Greenville Pitt County Sports Commission, and I'll call for Andrew Schmidt for that presentation. Andrew?
All right. Thank you, guys. I'm Andrew Schmidt, president and CEO of this Greenville NC and also working with our sports commission. And I have Senadra Dillard, who is our sports sales assistant at the sports commission. And we'll keep it brief. I know you guys got a lot on your agenda, but we just wanted to give you an update on what's going on with the sports commission. Just a quick history of the sports commission. It was founded in 2019. It is under the umbrella of the Convention and Visitors Bureau. We started with two employees, Paul Sheehan and Greg Williams. Paul has since left and Senadra has taken Paul's spot, and we're currently looking for an executive director of the sports commission. We went through that process once and did not get the applicant pool that we were looking for, so we'll be doing that again after the holidays. Our brand is Play Greenville NC Sports. So when we go travel and recruit sports tournaments, that's who we're going as. Yes, we're under the CBB, but that is our brand. Our first year, we booked almost 40 tournaments. That equated to 15 million in economic impact. Would have been more, but unfortunately COVID and the restrictions from the governor that limited the amount of people that could gather even outside caused a lot of tournaments to be canceled in late 2020, but we did hop on the horse again in 2021. And I'm really excited to share that in 2122, a total of 64 tournaments were booked. And that's awesome with that 22.1 million of economic impact. That's our goal is the economic impact. But our second goal, and just as important, is to expose people to Greenville and Pitt County for the first time. So 34 first-time tournaments. That's really important to us because what happened during COVID is we had some tournament rights holders like USA Rugby and others that actually went bankrupt because they couldn't afford no tournaments. So we had to replace that business and we were very successful in doing that. We market Greenville very, very heavily as a sports destination. We have to compete against other cities to bring sports tournaments here. They don't just magically show up. We have to actually go out and recruit them. So I want to share just a few things that we've done. On the left and right are examples of our Play It Up campaign. So we have Play It Up, Mask Up, we have two others, Kick It Up and Fire It Up. So we use those in digital and also print advertising. We do a lot of social media as well to talk about the tournaments that are coming to Greenville Pitt County. And we also have a 30-second commercial that we've developed. And the commercial is not totally sports-oriented, but it's also destination-based. And what that is, and the reason that is, is because a lot of these parents and kids are traveling 10, 11 months out of the year for the sports tournaments. What the latest trend is, is for them to turn that into a staycation. So one or two days before or one to two days after the fact they're coming and we want to get them to stay before or after the tournament. So we're going to show a 30-second commercial for you. I do want to let you know that this commercial played 126 times during the Little League Softball World Series on ESPN. So up and down the mid-Atlantic, we advertise Greenville and Pitt County as a sports destination as in also a leisure destination. So I think you're the man, Brock.
Discover Greenville, North Carolina, where we put whole hall queue on the map and inspiration lives on every corner. Unblow for a moment of tranquility or enjoy one of our parks, fields, greenways or trails. Then recharge with fresh, local flavors, one-of-a-kind art galleries and toe-tapping music. North Carolina's Emerald City is filled with countless hidden gems. Find yours in Greenville, North Carolina.
If you do bring your checkbook, spend money. So thank you, Brock, for taking care of that. So that commercial, like I said, ran 126 times up and down the East Coast and on ESPN. So that is one that we use quite a bit and it's really beneficial to get people to just inquire about our area. And it's very successful in doing that. I wanted to share our fall marketing. We've been out and about since the end of August promoting Greenville as a sports destination. Some of the things that we've been to are the Sports Relationship Conference in Savannah, Georgia. That was quite successful. Senadra is going to tell you a little bit about some of the successes we had at that. There's an event coming up called U.S. Sports Congress that's going to be in Richmond, Virginia next month. We'll be at that. And both sports and U.S. Sports Congress are for smaller markets. So we don't go out, we don't go to the large, large shows that have LA and DC and Philly and all those places because we can't compete against them and we can't hold the size of tournaments that those people are looking for. So we focus on small markets. We've been talking a lot this fall with the North Carolina High School Athletic Association, trying to get more events here, either regional or state tournaments. North Carolina Sports Association is a group that we belong to that helps bring sports tournaments to North Carolina. We also look at the legislative aspects of sports in North Carolina. One of the things that we're working on is the tourism grant program for sports events, which I think our Little League Softball World Series would qualify for. Compete Sports Diversity, DEI, diversity, equity and inclusion is a big thing in our CBB right now. And Compete Sports Diversity is a group that we're working with. We're hoping to have them here in the spring to have their board meeting and look at our facilities so we can bring more diverse sports tournaments to Greenville. And then bored from the pandemic, Play Easy, that's an online sports tournament forum that we're now participating in. So anyone in this room can start conversations with us about holding sports tournaments or learning about our facilities. So those are things that we're currently working this fall on. And I'm going to turn it over to Senadra, she's going to tell you a little bit about some of the fall tournaments.
Hello, I hope everyone's doing well. As Andrew said, I'm Senadra Dillard, sports sales assistant with the sports commission. So I just wanted to give you an overview of the success that we've had this fall with a variety of sports. So we have USTA NC with their 65-plus tennis state championship. This brought about 600 players and we are on a two-year contract, so they will be here next spring. It was a postponed tournament, so it was still very successful and we are looking forward to having them back. We've had numerous USA softball events, North Carolina High School Athletic Association with the bow run, cross country. We also have the Professional Disc Off Association. So we have a local disc off association, Greenville Disc Off. They've held their eighth-year event for about three years now. We've seen growth, about 100 players and growth. So this year we saw 270 players at that event. And then this weekend, East Carolina Aquatics is hosting a swim meet. We will see about 234 swimmers and approximately 500 to 600 visitors altogether. So we're very excited for them to host that this weekend.
A couple of the ones too, one that we're really excited about too is NERSA. That's a cooperation with East Carolina University and the NRC complex out on 264, like you're going to Washington. So we're really fortunate with the relationships we've established, not only with Don and Recreation Parks, but also with East Carolina University. So we've got three NERSA events this fall. We just had Kepner Cup, which is soccer. We've got lacrosse and we have an Ultimate Frisbee coming up. So all 500-plus athletes coming for two to three days. So we really appreciate the relationships that we have with people in this room to market Greenville as a sports destination.
And to give you an update on our latest wins, I know Andrew touched on the conference we went to in Savannah, Georgia. So we actually had the privilege of meeting with tournament planners there. And two of the events we brought back were United Flag Football League. This is a flag football organization based out of Florida that we will be working with. And we have finally set dates for May of 2023 for that event. And then we have AmeriCheer, which is a dance, AmeriCheer, AmeriDance is a cheer and dance organization. We are in a process of setting those dates, but they will either be here early 2023 or early 2024, so we're excited for that. And last but not least, we really pride ourselves in providing a variety of events, including educational events. So usually anything where there is a tournament or someone can win, we look for those events. So that would be first robotics. We want to see about 1,500 competitors, not players, competitors at this event. Very bright, bright kids that are coming to compete in this event. So we've seen growth in this from last year, which it was a district championship, and now we will be hosting in Greenville the state championship. So we're really excited for that to come in March 2023.
Yeah, and like I said, we will take anything that's a competition. I know we've had some really different types. We've had fencing, which is really interesting to watch and a little scary to watch because they're, you know, doing their swords. You know, Rick has helped us do, Councilman Smiley helped us do chess. We've got a chess tournament here as well. We just talked to the cup stacking association, so the kids that cap, stack cups, they can do that really fast. Had that at Midges Coliseum. So anything with a winner, we're interested in bringing to Greenville. So I just want to give you a quick update. We're working really hard to bring sports tournaments to Greenville, create that economic impact and to create that exposure for Greenville. So happy to answer any questions that anybody has.
So for the robotics one, the one that we hosted, you said is the district one?
It's the district.
Okay.
Right, so we graduated.
That's awesome. I mean, there's always a huge crowd there. There's always a ton of kids that are there. I mean, this last year, if I get invited back to it, please tell them I don't wear masks.
Would you like to be invited back to it?
Oh my gosh, I couldn't breathe like for the whole day. Like, because you have to wear those goggles and all the kids, you can see their, all their eyes, they could barely see. It was the craziest thing.
It's crazy. The kids have a new task every nine minutes that they have to work on. So, but yes, we'll invite you back. There may be a tire too, you can change out there too.
No, that's a great one. So I appreciate all that you guys do and how hard it's been. I know it's been very difficult through the pandemic to be able to continue to do the work that you're doing, but we're thankful for what you're doing and bringing different tournaments and different events to Greenville because it's great. I've kind of got myself now involved in athletics with my daughter and it is amazing, the business. I mean, I was a believer before, but now I'm a really big believer, knowing how much they travel and how much money they spend at each of the places they go to. So anything that we can do to continue to bring more events is amazing. So thank you for all that you guys do.
Most softball tournaments to all be brought to Greenville so you can travel less.
Yeah, that'd be great.
We would love that.
Yes, ma'am.
Your marketing is really very distinctive and very compelling. I don't imagine that's done in-house. Do you contract for your marketing, all the copy and your taglines and everything?
We do. We have an agency of record, French West Vaughn, they specialize in tourism. And so we work with them on a retainer basis and they help us develop our videos and help with our social and certainly come up with taglines and all the things that you see.
Well, it looks great.
Thank you. All right, any other questions?
Are there any opportunities out there for y'all that might be unlocked with greater investment facilities or anything like that, you know, there?
Yeah, you know, the thing that we could use is an indoor facility. The thing that walks out the door is basketball, volleyball, indoor soccer, things like that. You know, we know that there are other competing facilities pretty close by, namely Rocky Mountain Events Center, but we have talked to a lot of tournament organizers and they would prefer to be here if there were an option to be here. So we feel pretty confident we could have that filled up on a pretty consistent basis.
What type of facilities are those, are those, are they, again?
I mean, every community. Yeah, basically, you have to look at it as what do you have as far as hotels as well? Because you have to match that up with what you have and what else is going on in the community. So I would say an indoor facility that had six basketball courts, which could be converted into 10 volleyball courts would be ideal for our size.
Are there any areas in North Carolina that have such a facility and do you know how much revenue generated by that sports complex that you can give to us as an example?
We can certainly do that, yes, sir. You know, we wouldn't look at Greensboro like, or Virginia Beach or places like that because they're just huge, but we have like-sized facilities, so we can get data for you on that, for sure.
Madam Manager, number two?
Thank you, Mayor. I have number two's an update on the Uptown Commercial Solid Waste Collection. The council received a presentation about this in August. We wanted to come back, sort of do a quick run-through of where we are and how we got there and then talk to the council about some possible recommendations. I'll turn it over to Kevin. Go off to interview the council.
Thank you and good afternoon, Mayor and members of council. Just want to introduce again Jonathan Ingram of Raptellus, Delbert Bryant, obviously our solid waste manager over there, and also welcome Mike Kavanaugh from GFL. So, yeah, as the city manager was saying, we just want to recap real quickly what we discussed in August and take that a step or two further and again, talk about the Uptown Commercial, some alternatives for collection. We've experienced some issues over the years and trying to better address some of those issues. So again, Jonathan's going to take us through these next few slides, but I just want to sort of introduce the agenda and that is recap of the August council work session, give a brief project overview, really brief into what we discussed in August, and then really hit on some of the options for the Uptown Commercial Collection Service. We've been working with the Uptown business owners, with the Uptown Committee, lot of meetings, over 10, maybe 10 to 15 meetings with business owners, with the public and discuss with you some of our next steps and just get some feedback from the council on what direction you'd like to see us go. All right, with that, I'll hand it over to Jonathan.
Thank you, Kevin. Good to be with you all this evening.
Welcome back.
Thank you. I'm glad to be back. I wish I could stay for a softball tournament, maybe a basketball tournament.
There you go. You're always welcome back.
Thank you, thank you. All right, so just as Kevin mentioned, I want to go through really quickly some of this, a lot of this information you heard during the August work session, but I'm going to hit some of the high points without going into the excruciating detail that I did last time, right? So I'll spare you that. But just a quick overview of the project and really what we were tasked with taking a look at. So we were brought in to look at Uptown trash collection primarily, but also some of the recycling collection kind of rolls into that as well, with a very specific goal to address and kind of create some consistent service levels. There's some inconsistency and I'll kind of touch on some of the things that we learned through the process there, to create a transparent cost and fee structure for your business owners and for your residents. Not as much of an issue for the residents, as you all know, you all collect refuse for your residential customers in Uptown as well citywide, but the fee structure for individual business owners within Uptown is not as clear. And we want to build some specific recommendations around addressing some of the litter and isor issues that happen in Uptown relative, especially on the weekends, right? So we've really kind of set up a process that has really four key components. The first is just engagement. We spent a lot of time talking with staff, a lot of time talking with business owners, with the Uptown Business Association. We've also benchmarked and I'll hit some of the key findings. So what are other communities sort of similar to you all doing in this space to address some of these common challenges? And of course, best practice research as well. So we do this all over the country. We have a repository of best practices, but also did some specific research around your unique challenges. And then of course, touching on some of the options and particular next steps. So just in terms of the August work session recap, want to hit a couple of things. One is just an overview of the current approach. So, and so obviously you all know where Uptown is, the sort of specific service area that we are focusing on really is First Street down to 10th Street. So one of the things you may recall is when we discussed this in August, we were considering sort of this area down to 9th Street instead of 10th, but looking at the geography, we've extended that. It just makes more sense from a physical boundary perspective to make 10th Street kind of the bottom half of that district. But, so South Pitt Street to Reed and then of course, the Dickinson Corridor. So all the investment that you all have made in that particular part of the community, we want to build that into this consideration as well, so that any of the issues that we may see in Uptown don't sort of migrate to Dickinson and that we can apply the same solutions we have now proactively, right? So just quickly, you know, just a quick overview again, right now, each of your Uptown business owners are responsible for arranging their own private collection, okay? So most businesses are using shared containers, so you know, Hodges Lot, Rose's Lot, I'll point to those as an example. You have central dumpsters where individual businesses and residence businesses are required to sort of schlep their trash to those locations, right? So that's a little bit of a challenge. That's an operation challenge for a lot of issues that are for a lot of reasons that we'll touch on. Their collection frequencies right now are about one to three times a week. That can vary. There is some Saturday collection from GFL. We have no weekend collection now, but previously, but there is Saturday collection now. The providers, there's really a few key providers. It's really GFL that's the primary service provider in Uptown. Republic Services is also the second provider, but you also have some institutions like the city and like ECU that manage their own dumpsters, kind of scattered about in various areas. But the primary focus and the primary providers of service are GFL and Republic. So the primary issues, there's really three. You know, the first is litter, right? So one of the challenges that we see is the, especially in public dumpster areas, they can become littered really quickly and that tends to produce a compounding effect, right? When you see a little bit of litter, next day there's twice as much and there's sort of exponential growth. It's almost like broken windows theory in policing, but you know, applied to all the dumpsters, right? The other challenge is equity. So right now, GFL, Republic, those companies that have those central dumpsters, don't really have a way to make sure that the people who are paying for the service are using those dumpsters. So what you have is you have essentially free riders, people who are taking advantage of the service, companies that may be taking advantage of the service and not paying into it. And that causes, just based on market dynamics, right? The rates for those companies that are paying the service to increase, so they're essentially subsidizing those folks. So we want to address that with a transparent pricing structure. So that's really the kind of the third piece, is how do we build a pricing structure, a billing and collection process that addresses that issue so that there is consistency across the board, clarity across the board for each of your businesses. So again, the problem areas, the public dumpsters lot, we have a few examples here, just a couple of images, Rose's Lot, Merchant's Lot and Hodges Lot. This image of Hodges Lot is actually on a good day. I think all of you have been by that dumpster on occasion and know how bad it can get, especially during move-in time, move-out time, right? So you know, these are the three primary dumpster areas. There may be some opportunity to create additional dumpster spaces down the road, but these are the primary ones that we're focusing on for this process and really the problem areas that we really want to specifically and really proactively address. So that's just the overview of the current process. So as Kevin mentioned, we spent a lot of time engaging with stakeholders. We had about 15 individual interviews with business owners. We also had focus groups where multiple business owners were invited. We had a public meeting to provide opportunities for folks to come out and share their perspective. So I really spent a lot of time trying to understand, all right, how are folks experiencing this? What are they being charged, right, for their various fees? Is there any consistency in that? What are the issues that they see? And what are they willing, what do they want to see happen as part of this process? So we essentially, we want to identify what are the critical success factors from the business owner's perspective, those things that have to go well in order for them to get on board for whatever solution we offer. There's a few key themes that, you know, we heard. Strong interest in addressing the litter issues, right? We heard that loud and clear and strong interest in addressing those billing and equity issues, right? So there's some real interest in having, you know, greater transparency in the pricing structure and a clear mechanism to resolve some service level issues. One of the things that can be challenging that we heard is it's sometimes difficult to address a billing issue or address a cleanliness issue in a timely way. So we want to create some expectations around what that looks like and what are your service levels as a community and what can you expect? And there was also, you know, we heard a lot of openness to adjusting the current model. As long as the issues get addressed, as long as the price structure is reasonable and fair, there's a lot of eagerness, I would say, to really address those issues and whatever model that might look like. So as I mentioned, we also did benchmarking research. So we looked at really 10 communities and we tried to focus on communities that had, that were university towns, right? Different sizes, but very similar dynamics in terms of how they're uptown or how their particular entertainment or business district, everyone calls it something different, right? How that's used and what the impact is. So you know, we looked at Chapel Hill, Fayetteville, Wilmington, which is, I think, a really good analog for you all in terms of the service drivers. So we really tapped Wilmington quite a bit. Athens, Charleston, South Carolina, Conway, South Carolina, Knoxville, Tennessee, Charlottesville, Virginia, Richmond and Virginia Beach. So we looked at each of their models, you know, had conversations with their solid waste managers to understand sort of what are they doing to address some of these challenges? And just key findings, you know, eight of those 10 benchmark cities, they manage the billing process to address the free rider issues. So a common thing that you see is the city's taking on the job of billing and collecting to make sure that there's transparency in that space. Wide variation in collection approach. We expected this. Collection approach, do you use a dumpster, carts or some combination or compacters? It really depends on the infrastructure, right? What are the constraints that you have from a collection perspective? And each benchmark city has a custodial function. So folks who are pressure washing sidewalks, folks who are making sure that the dumpster areas remain clean, that's not a service that you all have sort of dedicated in the solid waste space. You draw resources away from the grounds crews, right, to provide service, but they're also servicing the other areas and focused pretty heavily on beautification. So there's typically a lot more capacity in the benchmark communities to do custodial work than you all have here. Heavy focus on education and compliance, right? This issue doesn't get addressed if we don't sort of build some education and compliance around the workers at some of the bars and restaurants. That's just the simple truth of it. So having some focus in that space, being able to address, being able to address some of the illegal dumping that can sometimes occur in that space and being really proactive about that is a heavy focus in these communities as well. A lot of communities have Saturday collection. It can be great. You don't necessarily have to have it, but there's some variation and we'll want to look at all the options and what it means from a cost structure perspective down the road. We also had a couple of examples of communities that are setting their fees for Uptown collection based on occupancy type and square footage. So if you're a large bar or a restaurant that really uses that dumpster, right, you might pay a little more than a law office that, you know, throws shredded paper away once every two weeks, right? So we want to maybe look at some options in that space as well to create some equity. So in terms of options, so you know, we spent time kind of going through a few of the key options. We really looked at three. The first is to really maintain the current approach with a few minor adjustments. So maybe potentially having some lease agreements with the lots to create some expectations around what, how often they have to be cleaned, what the standards of cleanliness are, et cetera. And also, you know, creating some dedicated custodial and education and compliance focus in your Uptown area. So that's, you know, minimal adjustments to the current approach, but tries to do some targeted mitigations here and there. The other option was city provided. We looked at that as an option to look at. Essentially, the city would staff up to be able to provide that collection downtown, adjust the fee structure to be able to accommodate that. And there's some advantages, but probably more disadvantages to this. And of course, the contract and franchise agreement. So the city has the opportunity to essentially enter into a contract, a franchise agreement with a single provider who will provide service for all of Uptown. And you define what the service parameters are, what the service level expectations are and what the pricing structure is. Our conversation during the August session was pretty strong interest in really focusing on this option. That's our kind of path going forward. So I'll spend some time talking about that without really diving too much into the other options at this point. So just looking at the options, again, various disadvantages, disadvantages. We want to address this issue quickly. The big sort of thing that I'll point to is, you know, the current approach, that can be done relatively quickly, but a city-provided program, that's probably a two to three-year process to really get the service established. We're working actually with Wilmington. They just put in an order for refuse packers, for example, and it's going to be two years before it even comes in the door, right? So kind of adding the infrastructure is a little bit of a challenge there. The franchise agreement approach, that can be done relatively quickly. We anticipate by the next budget cycle to be able to move through that process and have an agreement in place. Doesn't require as many FTEs as providing the service yourself, right? So it's not as much of a staffing commitment in terms of adding FTE at the city. It's a much faster process than in-house, which is obviously an advantage. But it also maintains the current approach to some degree. There aren't really major adjustments to the service apart from creating some transparency and consistent service level expectations. So you kind of have the infrastructure in place now to be able to do that work. There's some ongoing contract management burden that is, you know, unique to this option, but a lot of communities do this, a lot of communities do this really well. There's pretty clear models in place to be effective. So, what does this mean? So, now, kind of the new information, right? That was kind of an overview of what we hit in the August session. So, we spent some time really thinking about what the resource needs would be for that contracted franchise agreement option. And when you think about what that looks like, you have to think of it really in two buckets. The first is, what does the city need to add to be able to, or sort of build to be able to manage that program? And then the second bucket is, what do you get charged by a contractor, by a single contractor to provide that service, right? We can get to an answer on the city resource needs. I'll talk about kind of the second piece as well, that, you know, some additional work will need to be done there. But in terms of resource needs, we really, you know, focused on a few key areas. The first is collection crews. So, do we need any collection crews if you move to a franchise agreement? And the answer is no. The city doesn't need to add any collection crews. You don't need to add new refuse packers to be able to do that. There's no kind of major investment in terms of adding new routes, so that's good. There are a couple of areas where capacity is needed. So, you would need a position that would be sort of dedicated to billing and customer service. So, especially if we move toward a more complicated sort of fee structure that says different occupancy types and different square footages have different bills, that increases complexity of billing, right? You also have a couple of challenges in that you would bill via the utility bill, right? You would attach it to your GUC utility bill, and you have over 200 sort of specific businesses in Uptown that would fall in this area, but only 85 utility accounts. So, there's some reconciliation that has to happen in terms of the billing process. So, there's some complexity in that. We also would need some dedicated supervision and education and compliance in that space. I look at that as really two roles, because the focus isn't compliance, not necessarily enforcement. We're trying to build compliance in the program, not create a punitive process, and you need some management focus there. Now, on the maintenance and custodial side, really looking at peers and thinking about, okay, when do we want folks sort of onsite? We're really looking at kind of five to six days a week and overlapping schedules where you would have at least two custodial folks on duty. And what they would be doing would be pressure washing, right? They would be cleaning these areas. They would be doing some receptacle management, just in terms of incidental need to empty public receptacles, right? And also taking on some of the beautification responsibilities that currently your general fund, sort of ground maintenance crews, perform. What that essentially does is it creates capacity for those folks to do beautification work in other areas of the city, right? So, there's some real value there, some compounding effect. There is an equipment need, but pretty minimal. You know, light duty truck, two light duty trucks, as well as some pressure washing. There'll be some smaller things, but this really hits, kind of hits the high buckets of what we would look at. Now, there may be some variations. I'd say this is, I would say, this is the kind of the best practice and the ideal from our perspective of what you want. There may be opportunities looking at the broader structure and depending on what the bid might come back as, to look at different approaches, and we would do that. But wanted to give you a sort of a sense of, you know, what's the ideal, okay? So, you know, all told, that's about, you know, taking your benefit factor into account, your labor costs of about a half a million dollars in labor, some capital and non-personnel costs for that equipment, about $260,000, and a total of a seven FTE impact total. So, that's the city born cost or what you would need to kind of staff up that operation on the kind of best practice or the ideal scenario. The other piece is fee structure, right? So, you know, one of the things that we benchmarked pretty heavily was what, you know, what various municipalities are charging for these services, right? And it can vary anywhere as high as $4,000 a year, $4,000, $5,000 a year, to as much as $6,000. That's about how I'm hearing it. But most are about $1,500, $2,000, $2,500 in terms of what the service looks like. So, now, one of the realities is that we can't really say what the fee would look like until we got a bid, right? So, really, the next step, and I'll talk about this, is, you know, we can't really specify what the fee structure would look like until, you know, we have, you know, more clarity around what the current volumes are and what the current collection process looks like. But that's proprietary information, right? We've kind of reached out to GFL to try to get that information, same for Republic. And understandably, it's not information they're very free with, and I wouldn't be either if I were in their shoes. So, that's expected. But again, the highest among the peers is about $4,000 per year. That's four times a week pickup. That's what we heard in just anecdotal conversations with business owners is an individual paying $6,000 a year, right, for three times a week pickup, right? So, now, we don't have the bills, right? We don't have the structure, but anecdotally, you know, we think there may be an opportunity to drive down some of the costs, may be an opportunity to do that. Again, we wouldn't know that until we essentially solicited a bid and built out a fee model. That bid process would determine the ultimate impact. So, that's just kind of quick, high level on the fee structure. So, what does this all mean? There's really a couple of key recommendations. I think the first is, you know, we would recommend, you know, moving forward, developing an RFP, or request proposals, to enter into a contract with a single provider for Uptown Commercial Collection. We would want to set up a billing structure that kind of moves toward the occupancy type kind of model. We'll want to evaluate that, though, right? So, when the bid comes in, we'll look at the figures. You want to make sure you're capturing your fixed costs, right? It's the cost of providing service, but there's also some flexibility to provide for equity and sort of volume-based service. And the other thing we want to try to focus on is converting some dumpsters to compactors, right? There's an opportunity to really decrease the amount of collection potentially, to enhance cleanliness and really sort of enhance the operations there. We think creating a dedicated custodial crew will add some value. That's really, will have an immediate and tangible impact on the experience and feel of Uptown, right? That's an area that you all cherish. It's a great place, and kind of sort of focusing some custodial attention there will be helpful. And then we also see, again, that need for that education and compliance piece really built into the process. You can kind of piecemeal some of these, but in terms of doing it right, you know, this is really, you know, the model that we see and think makes the most sense for this community. The other couple of considerations, you know, we talked about education and compliance. I won't belabor that any further, but dumpster site screening, you know, one of the things we want to look at is how can some of these lots be configured? How can some screening be set up, both hardscape and sort of softscape landscaping, to really sort of mitigate? Because no matter how clean a dumpster area is, it's still a dumpster area, right? So, you know, what can we do to, you know, mitigate some of the visible things that you see in those spaces? So, in terms of what we would see as next steps is, you know, the first is really issuing that RFP. So, there's a process of sort of getting that developed, issuing the RFP, evaluating bids, figuring out, okay, what do we get? What do we hear? And sort of concurrently developing a rate model that we can plug those numbers into, right? So, what are the rate model options once we get the bids back? And then kind of compare that fee structure and give you some options to consider. So, you can say, is this something we actually want to move forward with this? Does it make sense to our business owners? Give your residents an opportunity? You know, one of the things that's important in this process from Kevin and from the city manager is to really engage with those business owners, and we want to keep doing that through the process, right? ECU as well, they're a really important stakeholder in this process. So, being very intentional with those folks. And then, you know, building that cost structure and coming back to you all with a recommendation. We would see this as very doable before, you know, essentially wanting to have this pretty much in place in July, to have a good decision in place before your next budget cycle. With that...
Counselor Schmaler. So, would this go into like a new enterprise fund? I mean, where you're...
Part of solid waste fund, yeah. We carve it out probably as a cost center, because we want to try to avoid as residents subsidizing Uptown collection, yeah.
Counselor Black.
That's what it gets at my question, too. I just was looking at the numbers. I don't see, as you presented them, how this could be an enterprise fund. It looks like it's definitely, how do we get to sort of the enterprise fund level with this program?
So, what we're focusing on is refuse and recycling collection, custodial sort of cleaning relative to your refuse collection infrastructure, right? So, the only piece that really doesn't fall into a traditional solid waste operation, right, is that code compliance piece, but it's a pretty consistent and common position that you see in enterprise funds, solid waste enterprise funds all across the country and in North Carolina.
So, this does eventually become an enterprise?
This starts as an enterprise fund.
Starts, because I was looking at the numbers and I don't...
We charge for the service, so we receive the revenue, and then we contract with a third party to perform the service.
Right.
So, it's revenue expense, it's just a pay-per-pass.
Yeah, no, I understand the mechanism, but when I look at 85 utility accounts, and that's another question, why 85 with 200 businesses, but, and each one's currently paying $1,500 to $4,000 a year, I don't get, I think the numbers you showed were about three quarters of a million dollars for the seven FTE and the, you got capitalized equipment. That doesn't equal up to, you know, three quarters of a million dollars. I don't see, how does it get to enterprise fund level?
So, what we've, so let me kind of back up. So, what we have shown is what we think the cost will be for the city to take over Uptown Collection approach. Those costs would be borne and reflected in the current solid waste enterprise fund. We would then set up a rate structure based on whatever the bid would be from the contractor, okay? We would take that, reflect that expense and determine what's the offsetting amount of user fee, of fee charged for that collection service to offset that within the enterprise fund. So, this would add essentially a cost center in the current enterprise fund.
But we don't know. We have some speculation about what it is that the private businesses are paying. We don't know all that. As Jonathan's mentioned, it's proprietary information. We don't know, but there is some speculation.
So, go back to the cost slide. Would you mind going back to the cost slide, please? Because what we are looking at is we've got city costs.
Just city costs.
But then we also have the cost of the actual picking up the refuse.
Which is not defined yet.
And I'm just wondering, what is the effect going to be on the businesses?
And that, we would have to do the RFP process to be able to determine, to get to that level.
I mean, I love the idea of the consistency and the pressure washing, but we also have, you know, restaurants don't have a high operating margin.
Oh, yeah.
And we want to make sure that whatever we choose is not going to be a shock or a burden to our downtown businesses.
Yeah, so we would certainly need to make sure this is affordable, and as Jonathan was indicating, this is sort of the design approach. Can we afford that? Well, we're going to put it out to bid, and then we'll see, when those bids come back, what we can afford.
But I do think it's important to point out that we have a number of people that are paying downtown, but we also have a number of people who are not paying downtown. And if you go around the streets of downtown now, certainly the cleanliness of downtown is not what we would expect. And when you look at the dumpster pads from several of you all, I received notes, I received notes from people who are in the downtown who send me the pictures of dumpster pads, and we have to send city staff out to go clean up this mess that is generated, in some cases, by restaurants that are downtown. And so, the idea is that if we create an enterprise around this, that we're able to do a couple of things. We're able to make sure everybody carries their load, but also we're able to raise the appearance of downtown, particularly around streets and sidewalks, custodial, and the dumpster pads. In the end, we are not going to, though, be in a place where general citizens would then subsidize solid waste collection downtown. We would not let that happen. That's the reason we put in just a separate portion of the solid waste fund to ensure that residents are not subsidizing this commercial enterprise.
And so, and I also really like the idea of folks who are not currently contracted will be paying, and I think that's extremely important.
Those folks will have a rate increase.
Yeah, and that's important. Yeah, no, because the free rider issue is one of those perennial issues, that if you can capture that, then that's great. Just curious, why do we have 85 utility accounts and roughly 200 businesses? Is this just a great industry?
We'd have, we'll have to look into that.
You could have a bill that...
Multiple passengers.
And it's one meter per. There's a number of different reasons why you don't have that.
Okay.
It just needs to be reflected in how you bill and who you bill, right? So, it's a little bit of work setting that up.
Yeah, there'd be some research into exactly that issue.
Thanks.
I'll go back to Q and A, just so it's, you know, clear.
What type of feedback did you get with this approach? Did you get, was it an overwhelming response that everybody wanted to see it? Did you see some pushback? I mean, ultimately, those that aren't paying anything are going to push back because they don't want to be billed. But I mean, from, I guess, the vast majority of the people that you interviewed or you spoke with, were they in favor of a different type of model than what's being used right now?
Yes.
Were they okay with the city stepping in and, I guess, taking ownership of the issue and trying to correct it?
I think there was, in many cases, a preference for that, yeah.
Because I mean, anytime government gets involved with something, the price always tends to go up big time. So, they didn't want to do it and solve the problem.
Well, I would say there were plenty of caveats around price. I mean, nobody wants to pay more than they're currently paying, right? There was a real interest in, a real openness to models when we test, because we did, I tested this model with them in the conversation. This makes sense to you, right? Any thing negative you can see around this, and if it addresses the issues, go for it. It makes sense, right? So, I think there's a lot of openness, a lot of eagerness in that space.
So, if the council decides to make a decision and move forward with one of those options, there'll be some flexibility as far as what level of service can be offered, as far as if we want to go with more of like a concierge service where they're out there and we've got city officials now cleaning up those dumpster pads, we make some hardscape, landscape changes to it. We can have that option, or we can have just the basic option, too, where it's just, we're simply collecting the trash and the pads are being picked up four times when the trash or however many times the trash is being picked up.
Yeah, so I think, you know, once we would get bids back, we would want to say, all right, what's the bottom line impact? What are the levers that we can pull to adjust and make this more, make this financially viable for the community? And based on those levers that we pull, right, does it actually, do the things you are doing address the issues that we set out to tackle, right? So, those are the questions, I think, you know, that we want to come back to you and have kind of a clear conversation around.
Anybody else have questions? Do you need a direction?
So, I think what we were hoping to do is determine today if the council was, wanted staff to go on and to prepare the RFP to, so that we can begin to get to pricing.
Does anyone have any reservations about? Because we don't usually vote, do we?
We just need to know if there's general acceptance or any concerns. See some thumbs up.
Yep.
Looks like you've got a consensus.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Well, you know, I was thinking, you know, ways to really improve the aesthetics. What we could do is we could do like the council member of the month.
Yeah.
And we could have, we could contract with local artists and they could paint their picture on all the dumpsters.
I thought you were going to have to clean up the dumpster areas.
Yeah.
I mean, Will Bell to do the Sunday cleanups.
That's what I was thinking. He was getting us, about to get us roped into some of that.
Yeah, there you go. I like it. All right, number three.
He's too busy changing tires.
...for bars and clubs and our ongoing discussion of the bar 2022 rule, possible changes. Shontae Gooby and Danae Alexander will provide that presentation. What we're going to do with this presentation is very similar to the last one. We're going to catch everybody up, where we are, how we got here. We're going to share with the council some new state law that affects this issue. We're going to provide you all with a possible change or option related to this. And so, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Shontae, because Shontae and Danae will both provide the presentation. My suggestion would be for the staff, you're going to get through the presentation. Get through the presentation. If we could just hold those questions so that we can, because a lot of the slides answer a lot of the questions.
All right.
Okay?
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Is there a problem?
Thank you, sir.
There we go, we're good, we're good.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so I've got some little handouts in front of you, I'll get to those just in a second. Give me one second here and we'll get started. So this is an update from the May ninth city council meeting of this year. At that meeting, council directed staff to have some more public input on the 500-foot rule. Also, since that time, we have had two new council members elected. So the intent with this is to bring everyone up to speed, to ask for further instructions. The other thing is, is if I use uptown and downtown, I mean the same exact place. If I use bar or club, I mean the same thing. So in front of you, you do have a map. I've got a larger version that's actually printed here on the wall. I know that's a little small for you to see. And then also you have in front of you a draft enforcement plan, and I'll talk about these as we go through. All right, so we are here, November 7th. So this conversation started when the city hired Huntin and Associates. They were asked to do an assessment on the impact of the 500-foot rule as it relates to bars and clubs in the downtown area, and also about attracting new businesses. So Huntin was asked to look at improving the existing conditions and also bringing in new businesses to the downtown area. Huntin made some recommendations on improving the existing establishments, and they also spoke specifically about deleting the 500-foot rule. It was thought that this rule was preventing investment. This presentation was delivered to council April of 2021. So since that time, we've had some city council meetings and we also established a stakeholder group as well. I'm not going to run through the specifics, but what you can see, if it's in black text, that means it was a city council meeting. And if it's in red text, that means it was a stakeholder meeting. And so this brings us up to March 14th of this year. At that time, city council directed staff to take the standards at that time for P&amp;Z for their consideration. So on the April 19th meeting of this year, P&amp;Z recommended approval, six to two, but they also asked council to implement some more public engagement before council considered the request. While staff was setting up for the public engagement meeting, there was also some changes in the North Carolina general statutes that specifically deals with bars, clubs, and restaurants, and this directly impacts the conversation of the 500-foot rule. On July 27th of this year, city staff held three public interest meetings. So now I want to go through the original text. So this was the text that was presented at the Planning and Zoning Commission. So you can see we had a definition of a bar 2022. The thing, the, the components of that was they may charge a cover or a minimum charge to get in. That would have to be less than 3,500 square feet. They may have library-recorded music, floor show, dance show, they may serve food. They would have to close by midnight, Sunday through Thursday, and 1:00 a.m. on Fridays and Saturdays. Also, this would require a special use permit, of course, that is from the Board of Adjustment. If there is amplified sound after 11, an establishment would have to employ professional security guards. The number of security guards is directly related to the occupancy of the building. So not the number of folks that, not in the establishment, but for the occupancy of the building. And it's just a simple table there of the numbers versus the capacity. And again, there were some more standards, a security plan approved by Greenville PD, lighting plan to ensure adequate lighting to the exterior, no parking requirements. They would use apps and software to detect fake IDs. They would comply with current building codes and safety standards. And then the other thing which is most important, which was there would not be a separation between these uses or districts. So this is the area, or this is a map of the current boundary, starts at Third Street, it goes all the way down to 10th Street. On the right-hand side, that would come down Reed Circle, Cotench, and then down to Evans. And on your left-hand side, it would go up the railroad tracks and come across Fifth and up to Pitt Street. So here's that map that you have in front of you. This was a study that we did back in July, and the purpose of it was to identify lots where a potential bar 2022 could locate. So I'm going to run you through the color so you sort of get a feel for what this map is actually telling you. So the first thing we did was if it is purple-hatched, that means it's city-owned property, so those have been excluded. Then the next thing we did was we marked institutional uses such as state-owned property, DOT-owned property, Jarvis Church, Greenville Museum. We, again, excluded those properties as well. The blue-hatched properties are privately owned, but they are vacant, so they don't have a building on them. And now you have essentially what's left, and you have buildings that are either red, blue, or brown. So if they're red, that means that they are 2,000 square feet or less. If they are blue, that means they're 3,500 square feet or less. And then brown means they're 3,500 and above. And we just use that as, you know, the 3,500, again, that was the minimum size requirement. So we just use that to break the sizes up. And then what we further did was, it's kind of hard to see, but on my larger map you can see it easier, we numbered.
Is the size requirement minimum or maximum?
Minimum, maximum, I'm sorry. I said minimum, I'm sorry. And then what we also did was if they are bounded in yellow, they have a number on them, that means they were vacant at the time we did this study, which was in July. There's only been one property that is in the process of being renovated and opened. That is at 214 East Fifth, that's where the way used to be located, and that's in the process of reopening. Also during the stakeholder meeting, staff went ahead and showed some additional locations that it might be possible. Again, this would be part of the bar 2022 standard. So the locations we showed, this is at the intersection of Fire Tower Road and Memorial Drive. This is the intersection of Fire Tower Road, this is at Arlington and at Charles Boulevard. And then this is along North Memorial Drive, this is, the Martin Luther King Jr. Highway is just to the north, and then it goes to Easy Street. So then we have the enforcement standards, that's what's in front of you, and the enforcement standards were not reviewed by P&amp;Z. So this is something new, this is something that was shared with the stakeholder group. And so what we did was we, we looked at what would be a trigger if you have a special use permit, and what would be the mechanism to have a permit holder either go back to Board of Adjustment for either a revocation of the permit or a modification. So the first thing we did was we divided violations into public safety. Generally, you can think of Greenville PD, Greenville Fire. And then we looked at public nuisance. Public nuisance would mainly deal with the planning department. So within the public safety, we looked at major violations and minor violations. So some major violations would be aggravated assault, broken fire systems or alarm. Example of minor would be noise violations, potentially exit signs not working. So what this means is if you look at major, it says two violations in six months. So what that means is if you have two violations within six months, that could take, that would take you back to Board of Adjustment, potential revocation or modification. Or if you have four minor violations in six months, it would be the same thing. This is what would have the permit holder go back to Board of Adjustment. If you notice, under public nuisance, it has the same count, four violations within six months. So now we're up to the stakeholder meeting. We have three different meetings on July 27th. There were approximately 40 attendees that came. There were representatives of downtown bars and business owners, residences, the Hilton, Truna, and others. And at this meeting, planning staff reviewed the regulations, again, that I went through that were reviewed by P&amp;Z. We presented the three additional areas and the enforcement plan. So the next few, so the next few slides were some of the things, some, some of the information that we did get back as we were having the meeting. So a potential was to offer the option of allowing sales of 20% of other goods and/or services other than alcoholic beverages, to limit the size to 2,000 square feet instead of 3,500. We talked about closing times again, and this was moving up closing times. And there was some concern about increased criminal activity with more alcohol establishments. Some feedback, again, may discourage new business and residents from locating in the downtown area, potential increase in noise traffic and parking issues, financial strain on new businesses with the new requirements. It limits free enterprise, and then also the lack of enforcement such as safety and City should concentrate on other existing or new businesses and activities, shouldn't change the current regulations, and by referring to that, it was the 500-foot rule. Focus on implementing new regulations for the downtown area first, and then security should be required. So with that, as we've alluded to, there are some changes in the North Carolina law, so I'm going to let Danae Alexander, who's an assistant city attorney, take over from there, and then we will keep moving along.
Thank you so much, Chief Gooby. Chief Planner Gooby. So as Chief Planner Gooby mentioned, first off, good evening, everyone. There were some legislative changes that happened in July of 2022 as it relates to bars and ABC laws here in North Carolina. Specifically as it relates to what we currently have before you and are considering, the term private bar was actually repealed. So there's no longer a definition in the rulebooks in terms of a private bar. And it required membership, annual dues, and actually maintaining a registry and log of patrons who visited these, visited these various establishments. As of now, it's no longer private, the definition is just for a bar, which includes an establishment that is primarily engaged in the business of selling alcoholic beverages and for consumption on the premises. A bar shall not include a brewery, winery, or distillery. There was a slight distinction between the House Bill and the Senate Bill in terms of the session law that was actually passed, and this was ultimately the definition that was adopted. In terms of reduction in seating, the prior laws required you to have at least inside seating for 36 people. It also required you to have a full kitchen to be able to establish yourself as a restaurant for purposes of obtaining an ABC permit. The rule has been made less restrictive, where you now only have to have inside seating for 10. And although you have to have a kitchen, that kitchen does not have to maintain operations at all times while the establishment is open to the public. So made it, like I said, a lot less restrictive in terms of being able to qualify as a restaurant for an ABC permit. And so as a result of these, these couple of changes, we've got to really evaluate the current uses that we have on the books as it relates to a public private club, a restaurant, and/or a dining and entertainment establishment, to see what conflicts there might be such that we need to either remove a use or rewrite it so that it aligns with state law. So moving on, you heard Chief Planner Gooby mention that there was a lot of feedback that we received from stakeholders throughout our various outreach and engagement. One thing she mentioned, she phrased it as it being goods and other services of at least 20% to be able to operate this bar 2022. One thing that was mentioned as well was that we would require 20% food sales. And even though it's allowable, it would conflict with other uses that we currently have on our books. So that's something, like I said, we would want to evaluate. Right now, state law requires a 70/30 split as it relates to food and non-alcoholic beverages, where our code currently requires a 50/50 split. And like I said, if we were to come in and require 20% food sales under bar 2022, we would be reinventing an animal, you would no longer be a bar. So we would need to evaluate that. One other piece she mentioned was updating the boundary. That's allowable, that would just be a policy determination based on the city's authority to zone. Same implication in terms of reducing the size of the establishment. That would be something we could decide to do based on our authorization to zone. When we get to the next slide, these are actually limitations as it relates to different proposals that stakeholders requested to see. One specifically was being able to regulate the time for closing. They wanted to move up the time in which these establishments would be required to close. And in doing research in conjunction with outside counsel, so we've got two layers of legal advice here, that it was preempted by Chapter 18B, which is our ABC laws, that they strictly regulate sales, consumption, anything having to do with alcohol, it is completely preempted by Chapter 18B. And so right now, Chapter 18B allows you to sell alcohol until 2:00 a.m., and it allows patrons to consume alcohol until 2:30. So we wouldn't be able to do anything in terms of that. We did look at an alternative around that particular request, and that was to add conditions to a special use permit. And what was determined that that was also preempted by Chapter 18B as well. So that is, that would not be a workaround in terms of regulating closing time. The next one on the list, they wanted to, or they proposed to be able to prohibit cover charges. That was another issue in terms of the Constitution. So North Carolina Constitution, there were two layers of, of advice that, that stopped us being able to prohibit cover charges. Like I said, the first one or the primary rule that we would have to overcome is what the North Carolina Constitution says. And it provides that somebody is permitted to enjoy the fruits of their labor as it relates to somebody working for their, for their livelihood. So that's the first hurdle we would have to get over. The second hurdle is what's known as the rational basis test, and it's what the court would use in terms of determining whether or not any type of regulation we put in place was allowable. And what that essentially looks at is, is there a nexus between the regulation we're using to mitigate any type of circumstances here in the city? Is there a nexus between that and our need to protect the health, safety, and welfare? And so it seems, it seems rather simple, but in terms of any type of evaluation, we more than likely would not have that nexus in, in trying to prohibit cover charges. We would probably be struck down by the courts. Last but certainly not least, there was a specific request around requiring establishments that are currently grandfathered in to our old rules, whether or not they would be required to outfit, or whether we could make them outfit in terms of being in compliance with our current 2018 building code. And the conclusion we came up with there was that when the use began, in terms of that particular establishment, that is the building code that would be applicable. So for example, if a use began in 1999 and there was a building code in place at that, that point, that would be the building code that would rule the types of upfits or what have you in terms of that, that establishment. And so the only exception to that rule is if there is a required, if there's a change in use. So if they change the use of that particular building, they would be required to outfit to the 2018 building code.
No, I mean for existing grandfathers.
Somebody comes in new, buys a, buys a building, tries to, wants to outfit it, create a new club.
Right.
Bar, they would have to use the 2018.
That is correct. That is correct. And so that leaves us with the question is where does that leave us? What, what can we do? So we were able to evaluate one proposed solution, and that was amortization. I know you all have heard the word before. But that essentially would leave us in a place where it would take substantial resources and analysis and potential, potential financial compensation to all of the establishments who are impacted by this. So what that looks like is we would either phase out somebody's use of an establishment, or we would force them to come into compliance with the bar 2022 rules. In those circumstances, would we be able to force them to outfit themselves with the current building code? And, and so like I said, that would take substantial resources in order for us to be able to do that, but that, that's an option on the table. So with that being said, these are some updates that would need to take place before we could adopt this particular ordinance. One would be taking the, the cover charge piece off the books completely and not making mention of it, based on the, the legal advice and counsel. And then the other piece would be making sure we struck the language around what time these establishments would have to close. So with that being said, I'm going to turn it back over to Chief Planner Gooby.
Thank you, ma'am. So with that, of course, special use permit stays the same. Any kind of amplified sound, security would stay the same, these standards, again, would stay the same. So part of what we did was we also looked at alternatives, are there some other ways to look at this? And one of the things that we went back to is that from the very beginning, we have had folks who wanted to open a business, and we talked specifically about downtown, they wanted to open a business. They did want to have some alcohol sales, but it was not the primary use of the property. But they didn't want to be, but they, were not going to be a restaurant either. And so at this point in time, the city does not have a use that would let you be, and I'm just going to use an example of a bookstore, and to be able to have alcohol. I'm just going to use an example of a bookstore, and to be able to have alcohol sales. We have nothing that will let you link those together. What that does is if you have alcohol sales, you would be a bar or a club, and then that brings on the 500-foot rule. So what we have looked at is, again, is, let's say, the book slash record store would have, potentially, we could have an accessory use that we add to that that would allow alcohol sales. So you could couple the alcohol sales with certain very specific uses. And then a way to, again, keep it as an accessory use, we could limit in size, such as 20% limit on the floor area, or we could possibly even look at a 20% cap on sales of alcohol. Again, those are, the sales of alcohol are through the ABC commission so that we could get those. I have said a lot. And so we're back to staff is asking for further direction. You have a couple of questions in front of you. We can proceed with the 500-foot rule. We can proceed looking at the accessory use. And then the other question is, is this something that you would like to look citywide? Or is this something that you would like to focus more still in the downtown area? And so with that, I'm going to be quiet, and I will try to answer your questions and see what happens.
She's going to be the first one. Don't be scared.
Well, I'm interested in what the new councilmembers' perception of this whole issue is, right? And you don't have to answer those questions, but I am, you know, it'd be helpful to know sort of what y'all think before we try to figure out what the next direction is.
I'd like anything, and thank you for that introduction. I like anything that's going to continue to enhance and activate our downtown, absolutely. And it definitely distresses me that someone might have a business idea and they feel that they can't come here because of this rule. On the other hand, we've all seen the, we've seen the statistics on crime. We've seen what happened, what was going on before the adoption of the 500-foot rule, and we've seen what happened after the adoption of the 500-foot rule and that dramatic decrease in crime. And some of us were here when two young men were shot downtown. And that's a memory that doesn't go away. So what I like about the accessory use is that it says, we are going to be creative, we're going to be welcoming, and we're going to allow businesses who want to serve alcohol to come here. And it's going to be an accessory use, and we're going to, in other words, it's not just going to be sort of all comers, but it's going to be something that's done with intentionality and creativity. So I really like that about the accessory use.
I think that leaves one other new councilmember.
Ray, three and a buzz.
I mean, but if you wanted to be, just want to speak on that.
The perception, I think, amongst some is if we eliminate the 500-foot rule, we're going to go back to the days that caused that rule to be considered and ultimately passed. A lot of things have changed since that time that I think support the need, no longer need for. I mean, for, I think, if I remember the numbers correctly, 25 bars or something like that, is that correct, were grandfathered in? Something like that?
We have about 15.
Okay, that's what, not now, but when the rule was passed.
Prior to the rule being adopted.
Yes, sir.
I will trust you.
It was in the high 20s, and since then, we've come way down. So if it was viable business, you would see the numbers stay at the same instead of coming down. I think it's very difficult to run a college bar now and make a living because at that time, the underage drinking laws were not enforced. They were on the books, but they weren't enforced. In other words, you go downtown, be under 21, and drink all day long, it didn't make a difference. Afterwards, they started trying to proceed in enforcing the law, and now they really do. And as a result, you don't see a lot of underage drinking tickets in court anymore because I think the kids have gotten used to it. They don't go downtown till midnight. They're trying to figure out where to go for the late nights so they can kind of drink without having anybody watching them. So as a result, the numbers in court have gone way down. So I think that has made it very difficult for a barner to make a living if it's a college-style bar. And I think that's what we've seen, the barners have come down. Plus, they change hands a lot. Whereas before, you had barners that, you know, were in the business 25, 30 years and saying, like the Sades, for example, they owned bars down there for 35, 40 years almost. So I think it's changed. But at the same time, I think there's a great concern that we do need to have some businesses downtown, to grow our business downtown, that would cater towards the upper end, like the older crowd, like martini bars and wine tasting bars and those kinds of things. But I think the consensus was we want to have some guidelines, I mean, some guardrails to go, okay, we're going to try this out and see what happens. And if it goes well, great, but if not, we've got some guardrails in place to kind of squeeze things back down. I did read some of the memo. I disagree with that memo about that case standing for that proposition, but I am of the opinion, I don't think we can regulate the hours. I know we can't regulate the door fee. I'm pretty comfortable with both of those. But I think special use permit, we can put enough guardrails on it so that if we do open it back up, we've got a quick eye sight on the business that causes a problem. You know, if they have certain calls that generates them appearing back in front of the special use permit committee, then, I mean, the way I look at it is if I go in and know I've got to do a special use permit, I'm going to run my bar very tight and run a good ship and make sure it does what it's supposed to, so I don't wind up being in front of a committee that can take away my special use permit. And I think we talked about this being an annual renewal. So if you're running a good bar and you're making profit and you're doing well, then you're not going to be a target of anybody. But if you're one of these bars that, because the way you run it, it attracts a bad element, and you let that get out of hand, then you're going to be shut down pretty quickly. And I think that's the guardrails I would like to see. I think the way it's, the special use permit, I think allows it. That's kind of what I understood, the two different versions. I mean, I think we need to open up downtown to get downtown rolling. I mean, I think we need to have, if you envision the hotel coming down and parents want to come here on the weekend, they want to go get a nice drink or something and have a restaurant, I think they should be allowed to do that. And right now, we can't do that. We can't open up any new bars.
I'd like to add one thing, though, to what you're saying, and I appreciate what you're saying, which is, some of us remember, and I've been in Greenville a long time, when Greenville downtown during the daytime, it looked like a ghost town. And that continued for many, many years. And when we adopted the 500-foot separation rule, we got ECU is now downtown, and we've got other types of businesses downtown. And my concern, and I appreciate what you're saying about guidelines, my concern is if we proceed with any change, is that going to be the preferred business for our downtown? And we're going to lose all of the innovation that we've had in the last few years?
In response, again, I'll come back. The bars that generated problems, I think, were the college-style bars. Anybody that wants to open up a college bar now, I just tell them, go take your money and go throw it in the Tarver River, because that's what you're going to do. It's almost.
Tell me first so I can go to the park.
It's very difficult to earn a living in a bar. And the reason there was a lot of kickback on the door, that's where they make their money, is on the door, an admission fee. And so I just don't see how, you know, a college bar is going to make that happen. And if it were, then why do we have a decline in the number of college bars that were grandfathered in? If that's not the case, you would expect that number to stay right at the top because they're so viable. They're not. And so I think having a nice bar where you can have a, you know, Scotch and bourbon, if you're a Scotch drinker, I'm not a drinker at all, but I mean, if you ought to have your Scotch and you want to do that, then that would bring that person downtown. If we have more restaurants, that person would come downtown and be a place to go and have a drink. Because right now, for the older crowd, where do we go? I mean, there's a couple of restaurants in Greenville, that's about it. I'm not trying to crack on the business industry. I mean, where do we go? And I would love to come downtown, walk around. It's a completely different atmosphere. And again, you've got those bars that were grandfathered in, but we don't have the problem. And again, I think it's got a lot to do with the fact they enforce underage drinking laws. You know, I just think it's very difficult trying to generate a bar that caters towards the college crowd, man. I think if you're in that business, more power to you, but I think it's very difficult. And I've talked to a bunch of them, because honestly, I've represented a bunch of them. Like the Sade Boys, I remember those guys would make insane money off the door at Halloween. We used to have 10,000 people downtown at Halloween. You don't have that anymore. You just don't. The crowd can't, because free forces, your crowd can't drink. Your college crowd can't drink, not legally anyway. I mean, I don't have fake IDs and everything, but it's not the problem it used to be. I think the atmosphere's changed a lot, and law enforcement's changed a lot, and how they're progressing has changed a lot. And I see it from what we see in the courtrooms. We just don't see that style of business in the courtrooms anymore. We used to see, an average day, I'd have 100 tickets in an underage drinking court. And now I'm lucky if I get 10 a month. And I'm not the only lawyer getting the business. I'm just saying that it's just changed in nature. So I think it's an opportunity because there are a lot of people who would like to invest in downtown Greenville with those types of restaurants that have our beverages that would cater towards an older crowd. You know, that would be nice to have a nice hotel, and you get out and you can walk around and go down to your favorite bourbon bar, or, you know, having a book club that has a wine tasting on a Tuesday morning with a bunch of ladies that do that and not cracking the legs, because it's what my wife does, and they don't have anywhere to go now.
And I still have concerns, but I hear what you're saying. I appreciate sort of your fact-based approach. The other interesting point is that with these changes in restaurants, I mean, really, 30%, I've talked to folks, 30% of your sales is not a high bar, it's not difficult to meet, so why not just, you know, have food?
I think, well, to a part, it seems like we have, it seems to me there are two basic questions here. One of which is, are we interested in letting people, this accessory use, you know, can people serve alcohol without being called a bar? And I don't know that anybody is really opposed to that, you know, that that's, so I think that that's something we probably would want to see move forward regardless of what we decide on the other piece. The other piece is, I think, you know, this sort of, the heart of the matter is, you know, do we want more people, you know, more spots uptown to be bars? And I think it's, you guys have done an extraordinary job of describing exactly what the heart of the issue, which is, if that, if we would allow that, would those bars be, you know, interesting adult-type of places, or would they be, you know, the sort of thing that we were desperately trying to get rid of 10, 15 years ago? My personal belief is that I'm much more with what you say in that I think that there are, we're fighting the last war, right? We're terrified of something that happened a long time ago that the circumstances don't really support anymore. But I think that is probably where, you know, the decision we have to make. It's not the accessory piece, and I don't think it's necessarily the citywide or downtown piece. I think we probably all agree to, you know, some sort of pilot program that extended or something, I don't know. So I guess the question is, what do other people think about that fundamental question? You know, are you, if you were to let new bars open up, do you believe those bars would be the kind of thing the city wants? Or are you over-concerned on the other side that you believe we're just, we would, we risk going back to, you know, a large number of very undesirable bars, for lack of a better word?
I'm totally in favor of the accessory. I think that solves, I think that solves many of the issues that people have come to me. I don't have a problem with that. You know, as far as the 500-foot rule is concerned, I've been against the, just the downtown area, uptown area. You know, I've always said that I feel like you try to cram everything into one spot right there, you're just creating yourself a problem. You know, I've always been more in favor of looking at more of a citywide approach as opposed to that. You know, I don't know if I'm ready to go to a citywide approach and do that right now, but I think if you look at the 500-foot rule, I think that's where you need to look at, instead of trying to tell people that they can go ahead and open up bars just in this area and this area only. Then what are we creating? We're creating a bar district. You know, I think the purpose of what we're trying to accomplish is create more business opportunities for people throughout the community and create more commerce in our city. So I'm 100% behind. I think the accessory, I think that's a great idea. I think that that would solve many of the impending current issues that people have come to us about, you know, as far as the 500-foot rule, I don't, it doesn't bother me if we move forward or not. But I would recommend saying that you look at it from a citywide approach as opposed to just the downtown. But I was in the minority last time, so I will.
And I guess my question is, because we did agree that we would keep it in the downtown area, would the accessory part be citywide? Like, can you separate the two? Can you say accessory is citywide, 500-foot rule, we're going to maintain?
Well, I think the accessory, they're just creating a new use, and they can put that anywhere you want.
Yeah.
So she's thinking, okay. Because I'm really for the accessory. I think that's something good, especially, you know, the examples that they've used. You've got small businesses, you've got, you know, somewhere you just want to relax.
Yep.
So what you, assuming that, if, let's just say we were all comfortable with that, then what you'd have with then is a fundamental question. Does the accessory use uptown allow for the activation of, you know, and the spaces that, you know, that are not being used and the, you know, and the spurring of new investment, right? Does, you know, the mayor seems, has said that most of the people who've talked into him are describing investment opportunities, and forgive me for misquoting you if I do it, that would probably be covered by the accessory use, right? Hey, I'd love to open a bookstore, but I also like to serve a little alcohol every now and then. But there may be, there may be people who are like, no, I don't want to do that. I want to create, you know, a martini bar or a bourbon bar or something that is going to be implicitly, I'm going to be serving alcohol. You know, I might sell some other stuff, you know, shot glasses and, you know, and Greenville sweatshirts, but most of what I'm going to be doing is running a bar. That's the question is, you know, in order to make that possible uptown, you got to get rid of the 500-foot rule, I think, is the heart of what we're staring this in the face.
And I disagree, because I think you open up that martini bar, and if you, if you're selling other stuff, you're selling glassware, you're selling shakers, you're selling, I don't know, James Bond movies, you know, you.
You would qualify as a restaurant?
Well, you, and with the new standards on restaurants, you can more easily qualify as a restaurant. So it seems to me that the accessory use really covers, and also, as someone who appreciates being data-driven, I would hesitate to change two variables and then try to figure out which one was working, which one wasn't. Let's try the accessory use, see how that works. If it doesn't work, we come back and we look at things again. But to try to change two things and we have something that is not desirable, we're going to say, well, was it this one or that one? Let's just, it seems like, one at a time. We've got good consensus on the accessory. We've got good consensus on accessory use, so let's do it.
Can I get some more clarity on exactly what she said? So if somebody did want to, you know, they're going to open up a martini bar, but they're also going to sell, you know, a lot of paraphernalia that goes with it, you know, T-shirts and glasses, and if they can get to that 30, 35% level, does that change their use?
So I'm going to jump in here for staff about that. So accessory use is an accessory use. It's not a primary use, but it's an accessory use. Typically, the world of accessory use is 10% to 20%. So you would have to, in the case of a martini bar, you would have to sell a lot of cups and videos and T-shirts and everything to, a whole lot of them. Because the accessory, if you're a bookstore, you're a bookstore, and you're just going to sell a little bit of alcohol. Okay, so just, and I think I'm answering your question, Councilmember, well, let me finish. Okay. So in order to be an accessory use, it's just a small portion of alcohol sales, not a large portion. Okay, so it would be very difficult for the martini bar to classify alcohol sales as accessory. You'd have to sell a lot of cups and a lot of T-shirts and a lot of that in order to classify as an accessory use.
That part I get. My question is, though.
You'd have to have a real primary use first.
My question is.
Well, and that brings the kind of variety that we want, exactly.
My question is, in order to open up an establishment that would not run afoul of the 500-foot rule, right? My understanding now is, if you want to run, if you open up an establishment and you sell, and 100% of your revenue comes from alcohol, you're a bar and the 500-foot rule applies. I thought I heard, and I think other councilmembers heard, that if you sell as much as 30% food or something like that, then you are, and it didn't have to be food anymore, now it could be anything, and you don't have to have a kitchen manned 24/7, you could just have a kitchen available that would be able to be opened, does you, does having, does selling that much and having that much of a kitchen move you to a use which would not be barred by the 500-foot rule? That's my question.
Into a restaurant use. And so that's the catch we've got here right now on our code, to be a restaurant. And let me back up even one step further. So if you do not currently fit into a restaurant or a dining and entertainment establishment, you are a public-private club under our current. you are a public-private club under our current code. And so in order to be a restaurant under our current code, it's 50/50. 50% food, non-alcoholic beverage, what have you.
The state law has changed.
So, well, state law has always been 70/30. And so state law is 70/30, and so that's part of the proposal, is to align our local rules to match what's allowable at the state level. So you would, in your example that you provided, Councilmember Smiley, you would be a restaurant under those, that particular set.
And it doesn't have to be food, right? They said you'd be anything, right?
So restaurants, it's food or non-alcoholic beverages, that equate to that percentage that's required. So it's, so in terms of anything else, it would be a retail use potential.
And we, it sounds like we need to realign our D and E with restaurants. It seems like, I mean, and this is all work that will, I'm sure, take place, but it just seems to me, and to Councilmember Smiley's point, if we have accessory use and we've got these new definitions of restaurants that provide a lot more flexibility, and I'm a non-drinker, I know how you might pay $5 for your soda water, you know, however they get to 30% is fine, but they just have to get to 30% now, so.
And that's absolutely part of the conversation, is looking at those three uses, public-private club versus restaurant versus the D and E. It might even mean taking D and E off the books because it's duplicative. So those are the types of evaluations we're having in terms of what's currently on code, how it's been impacted by the legislature with the state laws from July 2022, and then also with these uses that are swirling around in terms of that might be new for us.
So a potential middle round, rather than completely getting rid of the 500-foot rule, is if you were trying to find, if you're trying to, if the desire was to allow new establishments to open up inside a 500-foot rule, inside a 500-foot from a bar, they, from somebody who literally is 100% alcohol, then one meeting, one option, and we've never really talked about this before, you know, is change this 50/50 rule of what defines D and E to the 70/30 rule, which would arguably allow restaurant, allow primarily alcohol-serving facilities, but that did have substantial other revenue streams to open up within 500 feet of an existing... So that would be, again, I'm not saying we need to do that, I'm saying that that's, that is an option under the law, and maybe has been for a long time, but
Yeah. Well, I absolutely see that as a very positive way to move forward.
So we need to give some direction.
We do need some direction.
Accessory use in 70/30.
But I think a 70/30 would require direction, because currently we're 50/50.
So we need to align with the state law.
So are you making a proposal that that's something like a middle round, that instead just go on, slowly give the 500-foot rule, maybe make the adjustment going along with the state's law, and then look at the accessory at the same time?
Well, yeah, I would think that the accessory, I think, again, I think we're all, we should do that, right? If you're running a
Does anybody have any hesitation with moving forward with the accessory?
No.
No. I'd say we just eliminate 500-foot rule.
So you got that, right?
Okay, so we're good with moving forward with the accessory.
Okay. So now I guess somebody hit the 500-foot.
He's, in the absence of being with the 500-foot rule, he doesn't want to change the accessories, right?
No, I mean, because I think you're just picking, what I'm hearing that we're trying to locate to attract a younger crowd to come, you're like, why do college kids get a job and not come back here? Because there's nothing for them here. There's nothing for them here, in places to eat, entertain, sports. So if we're trying to attract that crowd to get them back here, now, as somebody that's 25, 30, early 30s, what do they want to do? Like a law clerk that's been here two summers, what do I do? I can't go anywhere. I go to Nino's, 9:30 they stop serving at the bar, which is really eating, get a drink before you eat. But I think we need to have places that have the bourbon bars and martini bars and the wine bars, and they're, now, we call them bars, it's like there's one at the beach called the Riddle Room. You go in there, you don't see college kids in there, because when they're buying a drink, it's a $10 or $12 drink. College kid ain't going to buy that. But it's a young professional or older that comes in, like to have a conversation where they can hear each other talk, maybe have some flat screens to watch a football game, but they're having their favorite bourbon or their favorite whatever it is, and vodka or whatever, and then they give you five bottles of wine. But they can hear, they can hear themselves talk and have a conversation instead of a drunk college kid who's puking in the bathroom because he's drinking
You're allowing that, and you don't, you don't need anything special to serve the wine or the brewery, so you can already do that. All we're saying is you got to do 30% in food or non-alcoholic beverages, and you can do that very thing.
But these places that do that don't sell food, like the Riddle Room at the Beast doesn't sell anything but drinks.
So the question, though, is, do we think that there's
Well, we're staying on a different length of the law.
I, that's an entirely reasonable and viable position to take. I just don't, I think maybe the time has come to find out, is does anybody, how many people here actually are interested in completely vacating the 500-foot rule?
I'm in favor of it, but I want to have guardrails on it, so when you come in and you apply, you know as the owner of that business that you have to apply for your special use annually, as I understand. And number two, if you get these major or minor violations in a certain number in six months, you're going to be sitting back in front of the special use, because I think that, as an investment owner, that I'm getting ready to put money into, that if I look at that and go, you know, if I run something that's not a tight ship, I'm going to be in front of this special use permit, and I'm going to lose, I could potentially lose my investment, if not on the six month, in the annual review, if I have problems. But if you're coming in and running an establishment that's trying to cater towards a young professional, you know that you're going to have a young professional in there who wants to come in and have a nice couple of drinks, discuss something with a colleague after work, take your date there or whatever, and then go somewhere else and have a nice dinner.
That process doesn't always work, and I think some of us have seen how that process doesn't work, and it can take a year and a half to two years before that special use permit is revoked. I would say, and I appreciate what you're saying, I would say, again, let's not have too many variables so we don't know what's working. We've got a social district, and we've got social districts in place now, so let's add accessory use. We've got these massive changes in what constitutes a restaurant. All you got to do is sell 30% food, non-alcoholic beverages. Let's see how this, this is a lot of new complexity. Let's see how this works before we do something else, take that more dramatic step.
And most of the opposition I've heard to this has been in just throwing away the 500-foot rule. I think people are open to accessory use. I think people would probably be comfortable with, you know, with allowing more alcohol sales and still being able to qualify as a D and E. But, you know, when you say, we should just get rid of the 500-foot rule, that's when people really start objecting. And I don't necessarily think there's four or five votes on this council to just do that right now.
I don't think, when I say throwing away the 500-foot rule, it's not throwing away and not putting any guardrails in. If you've got with the 500-foot rule and now you have to have a special use permit, that's telling the owner strongly that, now, again, if a special use permit is not being enforced, I want to know why staff's not enforcing it.
It goes to court adjustment, and there's
Well, I guess, it goes before the board, and then you've got a right to go to Superior Court, and it gets priority in Superior Court. And we have two local judges, they're both from Greenville, to be holding here for the next month. I mean, I don't see how that can be delayed, but my point of it is, if a guy wants to come in here and there's a vacant building, and he wants to put a major investment here and have a Scotch bar and a cigar, and he says, I don't want to sell any food, I don't want to sell chips and pretend I'm selling
Well, he sells cigars.
No, but
Cigars are
My point being
I want a drink, so
You know, and he wants to sell a $15 drink. He can't do that with this accessory, because it's an accessory to a main use that he doesn't have.
So what, I guess, what is, what's your objection just doing in accessory? Like, I'm trying to, I'm trying to get completely rid of the 500-foot rule discussion, because the businesses that I've dealt with that could benefit from the accessory are a salon that has a bunch of women sitting around drinking champagne, or a gym that wants to go out for a run and they come back and have a beer at the gym. So that's what I was just trying to establish, so you don't want to do that at all.
I'm fine with that, but they're not downtown. You don't have a gym downtown, you have a beauty parlor downtown.
Right, but so I was just trying to get the accessory, but you said, no, you didn't want the accessory.
I don't want one versus the other, I love that.
That's what, what I was trying to establish is, are we moving forward with the accessory, so then these other businesses can do it, and then we could go and shift to the 500-foot rule.
Accessory and
Yes, that's what.
Okay. I think I misunderstood what you were saying.
Yeah, I'm fine with it. So I'm absolutely with you.
Okay, okay. So accessory, we're good. It's the 500-foot rule, there's still discussion on right now.
So the question is, do you all want to look at this news called Bar 2022? We've talked to you about some potential changes.
I'm sorry.
Do you want to do that? Let us know. And then do you want to do it just downtown, or do you want to do it in some of those other areas that Shante shared?
Accessory use, yes. Anything else, no. We just need to do that. We've got social districts, we've got possible new ordinances for our restaurants, 30% food. Let's see how this all works first, and then return. If this isn't doing what we want it to do, we can return to that conversation.
You know, we're not supposed to vote here in these agendas. You may need to put this on a council agenda.
Do you, I'll say this, I appreciate that, Councilmember Smiley. I think that we have tried, Shante provided a slide with the numerous times that we have tried, that we have talked at council about that. What we're trying to do is get some direction from the council about what it is that you all want on a council agenda.
I don't think, okay, well, it seems like that the item that would need to go on the council agenda would be the Bar 2022 rule, right? But hey, are you willing to, is council willing to pass that Bar 22 definition and allow people to open up, you know, primarily alcohol-selling establishments inside of 20, and I would say probably downtown?
With a special use permit.
With a special use permit. Again, I don't know that it passes, because I don't think we have a consensus here. So that seemed like a fair discussion, that's really what we got to vote on.
Let me make one more suggestion. Does anybody have any opposition to changing, so we're more in line with what the state says?
Not at all.
I mean, I think that's, I think that's an easy win that we can all agree on. Let's make that adjustment, and then, I don't care, we can put it on the agenda.
Yeah, it needs to come to the agenda. Yes, we have to have it brought back.
Because we, we got to vote on it, and we don't really, I don't think there's a clear consensus.
Now, have the stakeholders been made aware of the changes?
Excuse me?
Have the stakeholders been aware of the changes?
We last met with the stakeholders in July.
So are they aware of what we found out?
We've not shared with the stakeholders the accessory use, we've not shared with the stakeholders the changes in the new addition on the bars. We've not done that. But we will put the 500-foot agenda, the 500-foot rule on the agenda for the council in December, so for you all, because what has to happen is, it has to come, we need direction from this, from the council, so we can then put the item on the P and Z agenda. So we'll bring that to council in December, and you all can make a decision about that in December.
Well, how's it going to, it's going to get, we'd have to go to P and Z.
Yes, so we have to, then we'll go to P and Z.
They'll give a P and Z direction.
But it's been changed.
Counselor has a P and Z direction.
It's been changed.